Three, two.
I'm ready.
Do it. One, two. Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order if you will please stand for invocation and pledge.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, once again, will assemble ourselves in the seat of government for Cartersville, Georgia, to do the business of the city. Once again, we thank you for your grace and mercy and for your tender loving care. While she for God us and direction as we make direct decisions for the city, keep us on one accord and move it in the right direction. We bless you, we praise you, we lift up your holy name. It is in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ray Throwe, please.
Kerry Hides, Ward 1, here. Jay Step, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Rock, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Alyssa Cornell, Ward 6.
Here.
The gang's all here. Let's get to work. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting minutes from January 4th. In council, you have had an opportunity to review those minutes. Now would be the time to make any corrections to those minutes, if any are needed. If there are none, a motion is in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And the minutes are approved unanimously. Mr. Reiner, if you get us started, usually you're rounding out the meeting. You'll do that later on, but get us started tonight with the audit presentation, sir.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and Council, Christopher McKeller with Malden and Jenkins, our audit firm, is here to do our annual fiscal year 2023 audit report. Christopher?
All right. Thank you for having me this evening. Like Tom said, my name is Christopher McKeller, a partner with Malden and Jenkins. I was the lead engagement partner for the audit this year, and I'm here to present the audit results for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. You should have before you two different documents. One is the auditor's discussion and analysis and the annual comprehensive financial report. I'll stick pretty close to the auditor's discussion and analysis. It has financial highlights, our required communications, and the audit results. So if you will flip over to page 2, this just gives some information about Malden and Jenkins and our governmental practice. As you can see there, we audit over 650 governments throughout the southeast and provide over 135,000 hours to our government clients. On page 4, this is the audit results. So as you can see there, the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and our responsibility as external auditors is to issue an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit. What I'm sure you all would like to know is how did the city do? We did issue an unmodified or clean opinion, which means that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects. On page 5, this just gives an overview of the annual comprehensive financial report. As you can see, it goes above and beyond the required financial statements to include the introductory section and statistical section. As you can tell from the size of the annual comprehensive financial report, a lot of work goes into that, so I want to commend the Finance Department for their diligence in getting everything ready for us, preparing all the schedules for the audit. On page 6, just a few financial highlights. As you can see, the total assets and deferred outflows of resources was approximately 624 million, offset by liabilities and deferred inflows of resources, approximately 200 million, which resulted in a net position of 424 million. On page 7, this is just a few general fund financial highlights. General funds, the main operating fund for the city. As you can see, the taxes are about 62% of total general fund revenues. And then on page 8, the general government and public safety were approximately 16% and 49% respectively, which is what you would expect from a city government. The unassigned fund balance was approximately 100, or 16.1 million, or 48% of annual expenditures. GFOA often recommends 2 to 3 months, or 17 to 25%, so you do have a healthy fund balance.
Opinions do vary on that, though, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. You know, I tend to lean towards the upper end of that for times like 2008 when the recession hit. I mean, that hit governments pretty hard, so, you know, it's good to have some in reserve.
But a city our size with multiple utilities, I mean, again, I get it, I'm counting by trade, but I'm just also looking at the standpoint that we're not like a smaller city that has general fund revenues only with property taxes and stuff, so I want to kind of share that, what's your thoughts, what you've seen with other places, because there is a variance of opinion on that, but just want to...
Yeah, so with the city of Cartersville, you do have a lot of different proprietary funds that are transferring money to your general fund. You know, if something were to break down in the water sewer fund, you know, there may be a need for the general fund to help out in some of those situations. So, you know, having a healthy fund balance is always a good thing. On page 12, in addition to the audit opinion, we did issue two compliance reports. So the yellow book report is a report on our test of the city's internal controls related to compliance laws and regulations, and then a single audit report, which is a test of the city's internal controls with compliance regulations with respect to your federal expenditures. Both of these reports did not report any findings, so there were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that we noted. Beginning on page 14 is our required communications. I certainly won't read through all of these, but I will point out a couple of them. On page 15, we encountered no significant difficulties in dealing with management. Like I mentioned earlier, Tom and the rest of the Finance Department, they do a great job of having things ready for us when we show up, answer all our questions as quickly as possible. So we certainly thank them for their efforts. On page 16, we had no past adjustments, so all adjustments that were noted are in the annual comprehensive financial report, and we are independent of the city, which is required by ASCPA standards and is frankly what you would want from your external auditor. On, well, beginning on page 18, these are some new upcoming GASB pronouncements that on, let's see, let's go ahead and flip to page 20. GASB Statement Number 100 is dealing with the reporting of accounting changes and error corrections. This will be implemented for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. And then on the next page, GASB Statement Number 101, dealing with compensated absences. And this will change the way that compensated absences are calculated. It will include things like sick time, if you pay out retirement, matching retirement when someone retires or someone leaves, that would be accrued. So there is the potential for a larger compensated absences liability. And I think that's all I have for you unless there's any specific questions on either the auditor's discussion and analysis or the annual comprehensive financial report.
I would just like to thank Tom and his staff and Christopher. I think the work that you guys have done on this one, obviously, but it's important for the city to understand the clean opinion is the opinion you want to have. There's no negative opinions on our audit report. Also, the fact that our general fund reserve balance doubled last year, this year is a tremendous increase for us to do that, as well as the other fund balances in the utility fund. That goes to Tom and his staff watching those monthly, as well as all the department heads in all the city departments. But I just want to thank Tom and his staff personally for all the work from this dedication and your company to finish the audit this year.
Thank you.
Questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Manino, if you'll move us forward with some appointments to the Planning Commission, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The terms of four of our Planning Commission members are expiring on January 31st, the Ward 2 appointment, Ward 4, Ward 6, and the Mayor's appointment. With that, Stephen Smith from Ward 2 is willing to continue to serve if reappointed. Alyssa Cooley for Ward 4. In Ward 6, John Clayton is being recommended for appointment, and for the Mayor's appointment, Lamar Pennley is willing to continue to serve if reapproved.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess, Keith, it's fine for us to handle these appointments all in one group?
You can, or individually, whichever you wish.
Thank you. I think if everybody's fine. Is there any discussion on any of these appointments? If there's no discussion, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, Nikate, by saying aye?
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously. All right, Randy, Laura, you tonight, Z 2306.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. For the record, all the zoning cases on the agenda have been properly posted and advertised. Appears to be no conflicts of interest, and they have been reviewed based on the adopted standards for exercise of zoning powers. With that, this is a zoning request for 103.85 acres from the RA 20 zoning category with conditions existing on it to the RA 12 zoning category with recommended conditions from staff on that for 199 lot townhome development. This property is located on Center Road. It's between Everton Estates Townhome Development and I-75. With that, you have seen it recently, back in 2022, the same request to RA 20 with conditions to the RA 12 for 100, approximately 199 townhomes, did go through Planning Commission and City Council. Planning Commission did forward it to council with several recommended conditions, and it failed when it came to council. With that, it's a very similar request to that, same type of development, same applicant for this request. And again, there's a long history on this property. I could give you a quick thumbnail of that, but I don't want to get into a lot of detail. You have the package that was presented to you, but again, it started 2004, rezoned to R-10. I believe 2018, there was a request for MF 14 on this same piece of property that ended up being withdrawn. 2019, it was rezoned to R-20 with conditions. That was as part of the Everton Estates rezoning. 2022, you saw the request for the RA 12 development. With that, Planning Commission did have a public hearing on this and did recommend denial of this application.
I should have asked this in the work session. When it moved to R-20 back in 2019, is this the same property owner?
I do not believe so. The property owner then developed the other half as Everton Estates. They rezoned half of it to RA 12 for that development and pushed this piece back to the original R-20, but it did carry forward conditions on that as R-20.
And then also, please remind me of the three tracts that were out there, there was an agreement at some point to have X amount of houses?
That is correct. Approximately, I have to thumb through here because there's only 63 pages in the report you have. Originally, a portion that is rezoned, that was Edouard Preserve subdivision, which this is part of, Autumn Canyon, there was going to be a total of, I believe, 360 lots. And then after the rezoning in 2019, it reserved maybe approximately 100 on this piece of property.
Okay.
After you subtract out what has already been developed on those three tracts.
Okay. Thank you.
After it had been developed, left 100?
Approximately 100 on this 100 acres. That is correct, if you did the lot count. Now, this rezoning would do away with that.
Got you. Any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. And at this time, I'll open up a public hearing for Z 23-06, and I'll ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time.
Good evening. Name's Carl Lugens, 114 Old Mill Road. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and also have someone with the applicant here with me. I want to start off by saying that this has been a lot of different things. It's been looked at a lot of different ways. Randy or Mr. Manino did a good job explaining somewhat of the timeline and efforts that have been made to do something with this project. I'm going to say this plan looks a lot better than the plan that was presented last time. I'm not sure who that engineer was, but this one looks a lot better.
Wouldn't have anything to do with the person standing here?
No, no.
Not a biased opinion at all?
So, but we put a lot of thought into it. You know, it's, it is a townhome development. We're requesting 199 townhomes on 100 acres of property. What you see there is about 30, a little over 30 acres of the property being developed. When we looked at this, we kind of looked at a broader scale. We brought in not just this piece of property, but we looked at other properties, how this development could help not only develop this property, but help in the future, develop other properties, provide connectivity, provide benefit to the community. What you see, again, is that I'm going to kind of come up to the board here. It is, stand up here. What you see is I-75, and then you see Center Road, which most people are familiar with Center Road. There's a development up in the corner here, which is west of the property, and that's Everton Estates. Everton Estates was rezoned, and it is now, it's a townhome development. As you move to the south of you is a medium density, single family homes, but if you continue even further west, you have other townhome developments that are in the county that have occurred. Moving to the north of you, just north of this, is the Canton Highway or Highway 20 exit. But between this property and Highway 20, there's vacant land, which one of the landowners for that land is present tonight as well. And then there's other developments that are occurring along 20, which are multifamily in nature. So when we looked at this, obviously, the first thing we do is, as we look at, you know, is there water, is there sewer type of infrastructure that they have in the area? And we check those boxes that that infrastructure is available. Then we look at the surrounding. Adjacent to this property is RA 12 development, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. This property also is adjacent to mining land, area that's zoned for mining, that's more on top of the ridge. So, and then we have I-75. So we're kind of in a corner here of what can you do? Currently, the property is zoned R-20. There is no R-20 land in that area. It's not adjacent to any land, so it's not conducive for an R-20 development. Why is it conducive for a townhome development? Because when we start to really dive into it, you look at it and you say, one, why did we only choose 30 acres to develop with? Well, that's because of the topography of the site. We have a restriction. We have a restriction that we can only go up so high and only utilize a certain amount of this land, number one, because of water service area. So we have to keep the entire development on usable land, which is that 30 acres we're showing you. It's not feasible to design a single family development on 30 acres with the topo that you have here and not being able to use the remaining part of the property. It's not feasible. So it leaves this property without improper use. We all look at it. It's not going to be industrial use. It's not going to be a commercial use just because of the location. So townhomes are the only use that we could determine that would be feasible and that would fit with the adjacent properties. So looking further into this, we noticed that there was an old road alignment that went, that kind of went up the hill, and then the adjacent property owners actually has an easement that goes, that they worked out with, that comes from the north down to a point that would be adjacent to this development. And working with that property and me having the benefit to work on some properties on the other side, I saw an opportunity to secure an easement or to negotiate an easement with them that would continue this, that would allow for the continuation of a road in the future that would cross over the mountain to go from Center Road to Highway 20. I've got a, what I'd like to do is pass out something to you guys so you can look at. I don't have a, something of a map, but on the electronic board, what I'd like to do is show you...
If you'll make sure that Julia gets one of those, please.
Yes, you can. I think I have nine of them.
Thank you.
Kind of, if y'all oriented to where I-75 is at the bottom of the page, I can then speak to you more.
Calvin and I like to share.
All right. So if you orient I-75 to the bottom of the page, you're going to see this development on the left side of the page, which is south. What you'll notice, what you will notice is that the continuation of this road that you see at the top of the page on the screen is where we show the road continuing on, and you can kind of see a carved out path that goes through the woods. And then, and then you start to see more development occurring as you move closer to Canton Highway. Well, we were able to do master planning on this whole area on Canton Highway, and one of the things that we did when we worked with the property owner who owned the property on that side was reserve easements and rights of ways to get all the way back to what we call the Tilly's property. So in addition, there is an existing easement and roadway going that direction, but what we did was we widened it. We widened that easement to 60 feet. Why did we do that? Because we saw a need to eventually have a road that could cross over. I don't want to get too stuck on this road, but that is another benefit we see of having this development. Both the developer and the adjacent property owner have been working diligently to come up with an agreement for this easement, and I believe, and they will get up and speak to that here in just a minute, but I believe they have come to an agreement in which we think that will ultimately benefit the city and the citizens to have that connection. Should this not move forward and some other development occurs, then that easement, that connection cannot be guaranteed. So we look at it from all these different reasons. One, the most important is we're here to determine what makes sense on this piece of land, what is actually usable. And if you look at conditions of zoning, it actually stated in section 22.9 of the ordinance, and it says, you know, what is the existing land use of the nearby properties? Well, our adjacent property is the exact same use that we're trying to, that we're trying to zone to, which is RA 12. R-3 is in Bartow County, but that is to the north, and then we have mining property in I-75. Those are the properties that we adjoin. Suitability of the subject property for zoning purpose. The property is not, is currently zoned R-20, is not suitable for an R-20 development. That's a half acre development. You would never get the infrastructure in and get the number of lots you could on this 30 acres to have a feasible R-20 development. The topography and the water service area are limiting. Relative gain to the public as compared to hardship of the property owner. We feel like the relative gain to the public, one, we're providing housing. That's number one. Number two, the potential of having other access points from Center Road to get across it, that's future foresight and planning that we're doing. We've gone out of our way to do that. The detriment of not having this zoned is a piece of property that has no use for the owner. In addition to, a lot of that acreage outside this 30 acres won't be developed or can't be developed today. So that allows for about 70 acres of the land to pretty much stay with the way you see it. Does a property have a reasonable economic use zoned currently? No, it does not. Is the proposed zoning suitable use as relative to adjacent properties? Yes, because we have adjacent properties zoned the same. Will the proposed zoning adversely affect existing use or usability of adjacent properties? No, it will actually enhance it because of some of the agreements that we've got in Will the current zoning could affect, would affect the environment? No, it won't affect the environment. We will do all the environmental studies and adhere to all the codes and regulations that the city has in place to protect environment when development occurs. And does the zoning currently cause an excessive burden or the use, and I'm going to shorten this, of our infrastructure? And we're going to say no, because there's, these are housing projects which we have capacity. The road has capacity. We did a traffic study. The water and sewer have capacity. We have electrical capacity. So we want to say that this does not have any excessive burden to our infrastructure. So giving all that said, we believe that this project is very well suited for the location. It may be the only thing that's viable on this piece of property, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and look forward to. I know it's not the voting today would do the vote, but I look forward to a favorable consideration. Thank you.
I've got a question, and I don't know if you or the applicant would like to answer that, but was the property owner aware of the zoning and the restrictions when they purchased the land?
Yes.
Okay. And then, again, this is going to sound flippant. It's not intended to be. How is this project different than what was brought before us last year?
Well, I think what was brought before you, I think there's a lot more information today as far as, number one, this is a, we're designing this as a for-sale product. The one that we had last year was not necessarily for a for-sale product. Two, we're providing a point of access. We've reached out to our neighbors, and we've provided, through our design, we believe that we've strategically provided a benefit for our neighbors and to the, a potential benefit to the community.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Well, maybe we want to correct something I said.
Sure. Yeah, if you would, sir, your name and your address for the...
Sir, Mr. Mayor, it's Chris West. Okay, well, maybe we want to correct something I said.
Sure. Yeah, if you would, sir, your, your name and your address for the-
Sir, Mr. Mayor, Chris West, 8,000 Cat Street Road, Douglasville. I'm a general counsel with the Merrill Trust. And to go back to the mayor's first questions to whether the applicant was aware of the zoning conditions when they purchased it, to my knowledge, no. There was nothing in the public record, in the land records that indicated that. So, not sure what the basis of the question is, but just wanted to just reflect what my knowledge-
And it was two parts. It was the zoning, the fact that it was zoned R-20, and the conditions that were on that, relative to water usage and elevations and whatnot.
Yes, sir. So, I think he, I think they understood the zoning classification, but not the conditions.
Okay.
That would have been, yeah.
Thank you.
If this were approved, when would you anticipate construction beginning?
Um, I, I would say it would probably, the beginning of construction no sooner than a year from now. And something like this would probably take a couple of years to build. Well, probably a, a, a year would be the earliest they would break ground. And then by the time the townhomes get built, obviously, there's an absorption rate when you're for sale. So, it'd be a several-year project.
So, is their intention to build this property?
Uh, they would, no, they're going to get a builder. They are the developer. They would be part of it. Yes.
Did we have a traffic study the last time?
I think so.
I think so.
There, there was not a traffic study done. And I wasn't here representing last time, but I was made aware that, that was one of the concerns, was the traffic.
Right.
Uh, we did do a traffic study and we, and we do have, and I can elaborate to the findings on that if the council wishes.
You good?
I'm good.
Good.
I just had one question. I know, uh, staff recommended, I think, seven conditions. Are you familiar with those?
Um, I, I did go over them, and we have gone over them since, because we, it was the same ones that were read during the planning commission meeting. And so, I'm going to say, I couldn't quote them to you here, but I am familiar.
I mean, what I was just curious about is, do, are y'all opposed to any of those conditions? Or are all of them acceptable to you?
I believe they were all acceptable, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have one question. So, I know that the ordinance, or the, the one entrance, and you're at 199 units, which is like right to the 200, or not to the 200 mark, that requires two entrances. Is there, is there any, um, for the citizen's sake or citizen's safety, is there a, is there a, is there any thought to backing the number down to units? Or, or maybe looking at tying it in? I know that maybe later on, there'll be another, perhaps another access road, which I didn't know about, which I think sounds good. What, what are, what are your plans to that? If you, when you look at that, kind of like, um, like we're right at the line of 199, like what, kind of the rationale there?
Well, the rationale is, is, is that when you go to 199 units, number one, or 200 units, there's, you know, when, when those codes come into place, they're built in with safety factors already. I mean, we don't cut it off because we say 200. If you go to 201, oh my God, you know, the world's going to fall apart. Now, there's safety factors induced in those, so that's why they say, hey, if we get up to 200, one, one entrance is fine. But not, not only that, but if you look at the way we've designed most of those, this has got a loop road internally. So, really, there's only a small segment of road that would even really have, uh, uh, an opportunity to, to block, to block an entrance or an exit. For a development like this, because whether it be 199 or 100, I think your risk is at the same with the amount of traffic that you're going to produce. And hopefully, yes, there is a road that, that, this is the first steps in getting a road to go over the mountain, to have a secondary access. But I think with the amount of traffic that you see here, one entrance is more than acceptable. The only thing that, you know, that I, if it were a, a safety concern is maybe widening the existing lanes, because there's really not another, another way to put a second entrance in.
And just one other question. I know that there's some mention of different, um, some variances that might be needed. What, what do you look, foresee, like, when you look at variances that might be required, do you see three or four, or do you see?
No, the, the only, the only variance, again, this would, that we would foresee that might be needed would be a variance, uh, for a front entry and rear entry. Anything that faces the, the roadways, but obviously, the fronts would face the, when I say roadways, the general public roadways, which is Center Road. It would, those would be the, the, we would design it so where that would be the fronts of the homes, right? So, you wouldn't see the cars parked that way. Everything interior to that, um, would probably be front entry. And the reason being is because we're going straight up, we're, we're stair-stepping this development up the mountain, uh, as each row. And so, to have a rear entry drive again on topography like this, I mean, a rear entry is, is almost not possible. Like, it, on, you know, you're going to see really the, 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 between, in the middle section there, that, that area between these, these lots here, for instance. To go from this street to that street, there's probably going to be an elevation difference of 20 feet. So, to have a, you don't have room to put a rear entry drive. And that's the only way you can develop that piece of property.
Okay. Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, we'll continue the public hearing for Z-23-06. Anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time.
A good evening, Mayor and Council. Bobby Walker, I'm, uh, an attorney at Jenkins Bowen &amp; Walker, 15 South Public Square. Uh, I'm here, I represent Tilly Properties, Inc. We are, of course, the adjacent property owner that's been mentioned. As Mr. Lucian's referenced, we've been in negotiations and discussions for, quite frankly, years with not just the applicant here, but their predecessor in title. There was a bank that owned the property prior to them, um, that we had some discussions with. And, and we also have gone through this with the neighboring property owner who developed the Everton Estates property and were able to negotiate and, and ultimately come to an agreement as to a, uh, an easement that would connect, um, uh, the existing road that runs through our client's property from Highway 20 to our client's property, um, through the Everton Estates property, essentially terminates at, um, at the, at, at this property. And so, there's a small portion that would be required, um, that, uh, to finish this easement roadway, so to speak, and connect the rest of the way to Center Road and connect that, uh, existing old county service road back up to Center Road. And so, um, again, we've been in discussions. We've gone through this, um, for some time. And I'm, I'm, I am happy to report that we have been able to reach, you know, an agreement, uh, with the applicant. And, uh, we are in the process of, of, you know, of getting that document executed and, and anticipate, you know, pending the outcome of this matter, that it'll be, you know, recorded in the deed records and, and it'll be something that, uh, you know, will be formalized. And so, um, you know, the, my client does have, again, easement agreements and, and documents that allow access throughout the remainder of that, uh, route that Mr. Lucian's discussed. And so, this is sort of the final piece. And, uh, you know, um, we are in support of the project. And we are certainly, I'm here happy to answer any questions that there may be if there are any, you know, relate, obviously, I don't represent the applicant, but I'm happy to answer any that may be about the easement or any of those discussions.
Any questions? Thank you. And continuing the public hearing for Z-23-06.
Good evening. I'm Guy Caff, 56 Castle Road. I'm the vice president at Tilly Properties, Inc. I'm just here this evening to reiterate, um, Bobby's position that we are in agreeance with this development. We support it, and, uh, we feel that this roadway is a great opportunity for the second entrance to provide access to the community, not only, uh, to this development, but from Center Road to Highway 20, which, uh, we feel would be good for everybody. I can answer any questions anybody has.
One that I have, I mean, so ultimately, 10, 15 years from now, five years from now, and, and that road's completely done, is that a private road or is that a, is that going to be a public road?
Yeah, so, Carl's worked, um, pretty diligently to acquire an adequate amount of right-of-way that this road could be dedicated in the future to the city or to the county, wherever it lays. We have a interim agreement until that time arrives that, uh, the maintenance of the roadway will be between us and the adjoining property owners.
So, since we're talking about the rezoning of this property, are you in, are you saying that you're in favor of the rezoning of it or the existence of this road?
Well, we think we are in favor of the rezoning, but we just want to reiterate the position that the second point of access and the addition of this roadway to the project is a benefit to the community.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue with Z-23-06. Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z-23-06 and ask council if there's any other questions or information you need or any further discussion on this topic.
I'd like to, I got one question. It's really for Randy and, uh, for the planning commission. I mean, ultimately, I didn't see any notes or anything, but the planning commission voted 4-0 on this. And I don't, was there any, I mean, did they give any reasoning? What was their?
They had had discussions. They had tabled it at their prior meeting, trying to get some information back, um, regarding school, the number of bedrooms and the proposed out homes. And, um, they did come back with some additional information. And that, they recommended.
So, it was a school issue?
They discussed number of bedrooms and tried to get a number count, whether two, number of two bedrooms versus three bedrooms. School superintendent did send a, a letter, had some of this basic, um, verbiage in it, but...
Were those numbers submitted to the city?
Well, we never got a number, bedroom number count.
Okay.
I was just wondering, because... That was my question, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, the planning commission did recommend approval. At this time, they did recommend, and I don't know if it was a different recommendation.
But a bedroom count won't be hard to get, right?
I think the commission tried for a couple, a couple meetings and never got them.
But I mean, is that something that we really care about?
Well, it was, they wanted it based on school board's previous comments. They utilized number of bedrooms to try to determine, uh, number of school age children in a household.
It's, it's up to y'all whether y'all need that information or not. The planning commission wanted that information so they can make a decision with respect to impact on the school system. Well, I think that information would be helpful.
Yeah, I think Furbach came back and, with that, with that request, but then he, like, they didn't, they didn't get the numbers. I think Furbach's letters in here and said, well, I just have a couple of questions about it. But I think they were asking, um, with 199 units, you know, what that impact would then be, you know, mainly because I would, you know, we are, we're not joint. You know, we are, I'm not really joint, but we are in the same city and it's our school system. They were just partnering to see what that would be.
Yeah, and that's one of the factors y'all consider.
Not to get into all of that, if they're, I mean, the applicant's here, I mean, do they know any?
I'll, I'll, I'll ask Mr. West, he wants to step forward and speak. But go ahead, you finish your point, Randy.
Mr. Steph asked, you know, with the planning commission, so, uh, Mr. Harvick did remind me that they also did seem to have some concern about the Tilly easement and lack of progress. I wasn't as concerned about that, because the language in there was still recommended from the previous zoning settlement. But, uh, the planning commission did seem to take a concern, but still progress on that, reconciliation of the easement agreement.
Mr. West, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to address the two or three bedrooms. So, um, based on my understanding, some folks were wanting three bedrooms, some, some were wanting two bedrooms, kind of for two different reasons. We'd be alright with a reasonable condition on one way or the other. I think, um, I don't want to speculate too much, but for some folks, more bedrooms may have been allowing for more children to go to the school. Less bedroom might be at a price point that, um, that they wanted a higher price point for, for whatever reason. Take that, which, without, it's just my interpretation. But, um, we sort of got into the weeds a little bit on it, in my view. But if, if, if you guys want to put a condition on it as to some reasonable, x number of three bedrooms, x number of two, that's, that's fine with us. I did, because we don't have a builder under contract with a specific number, I would hesitate to give a specific number from our perspective. But we're happy if y'all want to say, hey, this is the number two, this is number three. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. I think Carl will answer that.
As long as we're, because I did close the public hearing, but I, I mean, obviously, we're here to get information, so as long as you're answering, that's great.
If you would allow me, yes, some liberty here. You know, we did get asked that question, and I think our answer was, well, can we just consider them all to be three bedrooms? And you'd say, well, why would you do that? You know, why would you consider them all to be three bedrooms? One, you typically don't build a house anymore than three bed, a townhouse more than three bedrooms, or either threes or twos. So, we would be giving a worst-case scenario in that, by, by allowing the school system to know, hey, we're going to build all three bedrooms. If we break it, bring it back, or if you give us a recommendation, can you split them up? We'd be happy to do so. But we were trying to give a worst-case scenario. And, and that, you know, I started thinking, well, what is, what is the capacity of our school system? Because is it right or is it proper to say, well, we're going to allow you to build this development and allow you to take that child spot in the, in the school system, but we're not going to allow you to build this development and take that child spot? In all reality, I looked at the numbers. We have less students today enrolled in the City of Carson Stu-, and I'm, I'm a hurricane, than we did in 2018. We have almost 200 less students enrolled today than we did have in 2020. So, I'm going to pretty much, I'm going to go on, not a statistician on how many kids are going to be in this, but if we have 200 less than we have in 2020, and we were accommodating those students today, and we have still some room to grow, then I don't see how this development, whether it be three bedrooms or two bedrooms, puts, uh, an adverse impact on the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions from council?
Randy answered my question.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item. It is, uh, Z-24-01. Mr. Manino, you continue to run the show.
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a proposed rezoning for 109 and 111 Douglas Street. The property is currently zoned PS, professional services. The applicant is desired to rezone it to MU, multiple use. It's approximately half acre. With that, uh, the corresponding case SUP, or special use permit for outdoor storage of landscape material and material is directly related to this application. The applicant desires to put a tenant on there that runs a landscape business. This landscape business does have some storage involved with it. The ordinance does allow in the MU with a special use permit to do that. And that's, that's kind of the background of how this request came for the, with, for the MU. It's not allowed in professional services, um, so they are requesting the MU zoning.
Technically, MU's does not allow for outside storage.
That is correct.
But you can get a special use permit in MU to have.
That is correct. You cannot get that same special use permit, um, under the PS zoning that it currently has. The applicant also owns the property that, that fronts on Tennessee Street that is currently zoned MU. With that, uh, planning commission did hold a public hearing, and they did recommend approval of this application.
Okay. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you.
Just one. On Douglas Street currently, is there any other multiple-use areas that are storing equipment like that?
None that I'm aware of. There is some county-owned property in the middle of the MU down there that does have, that does actually have some outdoor storage of fuel tanks on it. But that is county facilities.
Judge.
Yep. Any other questions for Randy at this time? Thank you. And I will, again, I know even in the work session, we kind of mixed the two together. For the purposes of this public hearing, this is- two together. For the purposes of this public hearing, this is for Z 2401. We'll take up the issue of the special use that's asked to be attached to this in a separate public hearing. So I'm opening up the public hearing for Z 24-01, which is relative to the zoning and the zoning alone at this time. And I'll ask anybody who wishes to step forward to speak for or against, to do so at this time. And as with all, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
My name's Denise Archer. I live at 704 West Avenue, and the property at 109, 111 Douglas Street, actually with the county, have been combined into one lot rather than two lots, or very small lots. The, I have a prospective tenant, Appalachian Landscape, who will be renting my house at 105 Douglas that adjoins the 109 and 111 Douglas. And Appalachian Landscaping is owned by Billy and Misty Jones, who are people who are respected in the community. They've had their business for 23 years and are people of integrity, great responsibility, and a very high work ethic. They want to use the 105 Douglas Street as their offices, and then have some equipment. I think they said the largest equipment is a Bobcat, and they would have that on the, in the vacant lot. The vacant lot, since it adjoins the 212 North Tennessee Street property, would have the entrance exit gate for the lot that would be fenced. The entrance exit gate would exit into the parking lot at 212 North Tennessee Street in order for that entrance exit to access Tennessee Street in order not to disturb any neighbors on what, on Douglas Street. It's very important to me to rent the vacant lot, because the vacant lot has seemed to attract some situations with me having to gather empty grocery carts there, food, different things. The, in fact, I was contacted by the city about people parking there in that, my lots there, and I was told I would be charged $1,000 a day fines if I had people parking there, and I had not given any permission for parking. So this would be wonderful to have the fenced area for the landscaping company that wants to rent the house that is adjacent to it. The Appalachian Landscaping said that they would be happy to landscape the fenced area so that it would not be an eyesore to the community. I drove down to, two blocks down to Carter's Street and Douglas Street where the county owns the old school there that houses five departments, and I counted 30 vehicles plus two county buses. And the, that is fenced with chain link fencing with razor wire, you know, the barbed wire around the top of the chain link fencing. And I can state unequivocally that the look of the fenced area at 109 and 111 Douglas Street that adjoin would be attractively done, so it would be pleasing to the neighbors.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
Randy or David, I have a question for you relative to a fence. I know that in certain areas, you know, fences are required to have an ornate or be of a decorative fashion. Is, would that be the case on this particular property?
If it was in the front yard or within 20 feet of the right-of-way, they, they have to be at shorter height and more decorative, I guess.
So if it's in the right-of-way, that's on the back ha, back half where Douglas Street is, does that, does that create a, a problem?
If it was a privacy fence that was going in, it'd need to be 10 feet off the property line, and if the MU's on, if the front, chain link would not be allowed, that would be potentially a variance scenario. And of course, as Randy said, if it's in the front yard on Douglas Street, it'd have to, to be pretty clear, any obstacles, it'd have to be a four-foot maximum height fence for kind of decorative.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on with the public hearing of Z 24-01. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak may do so at this time.
My name is Nina Jones, and I live at 112 Douglas Street, directly across the street from the property. And realizing that this property is a transition area between both downtown city and also between Tennessee Street and Douglas Street, I just want to make sure that we remember that this is a transitional area to a residential area to North Town, and appreciate any requirements that we do have, as Denise has said, to make it continue to be an attractive part of our community. Douglas Street is not Tennessee Street, and I want to make sure that as we make zoning changes, that we recognize that. I think having the exit entrance off of Tennessee Street makes that a much more reasonable way to use this piece of property in a way that's helpful to the owner, as well as respecting the residential area of the residences. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll continue with Z 24-01 and ask anybody who wishes to step forward at this time to do so. And seeing none, I'll close that public hearing for Z 24-01, and we will take this up for a second reading and final consideration in our meeting on February the first, which also happens to be the city's 194th birthday. So there. We'll move on to SU 24-01, which is related to the same property, Mr. Manino.
Yes, thank you. Again, Mayor and Counsel, as you had noted, it directly correlates with the previous zoning request. Appalachian Landscape is proposing to locate Ms. Archer's property. As noted, it would require an MU zoning with the special use permit. The special use permit would not, would not be allowed to be applied for, under the PS zoning, and without beating a dead horse, Planning Commission did recommend approval on this application with three recommended conditions. Special use permit be valid for that applicant only. A visual screen be installed along the property lines that abut residential zoning districts, and the third one being the access from Tennessee Street.
Do we allow vehicles to be parked on unpaved property?
It would have to have some kind of hardened surface for parking vehicles. It'd have to be reviewed by the city.
And before we get done with this conversation, could you please show me where the road, I know Tennessee Street on here, but where is the entrance exit gonna be? I'm confused looking at it.
Through this parking lot, I believe, right through here.
Okay.
It would be...
Your current parking lot, it's gonna go straight through there?
She owns this property here, also, so it would be coming in on this.
Gotcha, thank you.
And as you can see here, this is, they would be renting this house and here, and so they can actually, this is also paved as parking right here, even though it's shown as green, and so they would have the gate here and exit on Tennessee Street, because this, right here in front of this collage is paved, as is this. So all of this is paved, and they would exit here and go out on Tennessee Street.
Gotcha, thank you.
Would they, the, the fence in the area, would that just be the blue outlined lot, the, that lot, or would it go completely around the, the property, or, or up against the, say, I guess that Scott's Barbecue maybe down there, would it, would it be, but up against that, or in that line, that property lot?
That would be up to the applicant, but where it's adjacent to that property up north, we would recommend a screening and fencing there. Now, they haven't provided a plan for how they're gonna do that yet.
Well, and I'm guessing we have the ability to condition it, so it has to have fencing on, again, I would guess the Douglas, again, if, if part of the reasoning is to...
Correct.
Stop some of the transitional nature that the applicant's dealing with, I would, I would think along the Douglas Street side would be appropriate as well.
Screening from the residential across Douglas Street, yeah, but the... Right now, the fence would only be, they'd have to be 10 feet back off the right-of-way with the screening fence.
And again, so I, go back to what is actually gonna be stored outdoors there. Is it equipment? Is it 20-foot trees? Is it piles of mulch? Is it, I mean, what is, what?
Well, the ordinance allows for outdoor storage of landscape materials and supplies and things like that. You'd have to ask the applicant what exactly they have for outside storage. Currently, I believe Appalachian Landscape is in front of Jackson Farm, Mission Road, and they're having to relocate from there, so if you've observed anything that they may have had stored at that location.
Well, again, in being respectful to the neighborhood and the adjacent property owners, I think it is kind of important to know, again, if there's, if there's vehicles parked on, on an unpaved surface, I think that's important to know. If there's, again, as we know that if you leave mulch of a certain amount out while it can be combustible, so again, I, and then I'm also, you know, looking at the aesthetic of it all. So I guess there's just a lot of variables that I don't know that I, unfair to ask you, since you're not in that business, so...
Yeah, I believe a representative from the landscape company, they were here for the Planning Commission meeting.
And Ms. Archer, I don't know if you have an answer to that or have an idea?
I would like to get with David and see what is allowed there. I would love to have, instead of asphalt, if it's allowed, to do something like gravel or something of that sort, but if it needs to be paved, I'll need to find out what that is. But they will have...
Circumstances, it can be a crushable type of thing for storage or physical parking cars, or it depends on actual parking and storage equipment.
Okay, so we'll get together with the planning and zoning department so that we find out what needs to be on that in order to park the, as I understand it, it's small equipment, and then their larger shrubbery is out at another site, so.
Thank you. Ms. Archer, Ms. Archer?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, just a couple of questions for you. Number one, the Planning Commission recommended three conditions. If this special use was approved, do you have any objections to any of those conditions?
Would you state those?
Yes. The one is that the permit would only be valid for the named applicant and property owner and specialty contractor associated with the application. The second one was a visual screen will be installed along all property lines that abut a residential district or land use. And the third one was that driveway access to Douglas Street will not be allowed.
All of those are fine, both with me and Appalachian.
And the second one is really more of a question, it's just a suggestion. You may want to get with the Appalachian folks and have them provide you a list of what they actually plan to store on the property with respect to plantings and shrubberies and equipment, so that counsel could actually look at that before their next meeting.
Okay, and I'll be out of town on February 1st, but I'll have all of that to the office prior to that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At the previous...
Hold, hold, hold on a second. Come on, step into the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the previous meeting, he said that all his plant materials kept at his Tunnel Hill location, and that there would be no planting material stored at that location.
Okay. Well, if we can verify that, at least it would, that'd be helpful. Thank you. We'll continue the public hearing on SU 24-01. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for SU 24-01. We will move on to T 24-01. Randy, keep, keep it going here, man.
Mayor and Counsel, this is a proposed text amendment to our zoning ordinance. Currently in our heavy industrial zoning district, we don't allow storage yards and wrecker services in pound lot-type businesses, but we do allow them in our ordinance under the light industrial. There's no reason that it, it shouldn't be in the heavier industrial districts. It actually makes sense to be in that district, and with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this proposed text amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. I'll open up a public hearing for T 24-01 and ask anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, to do so at this time. And again, please, your name and your address for our clerk.
So Darrell Simpson, 2555 Farrington Court. I lease 135 and 137 Wensley, and I guess I didn't do my due diligence properly, and didn't realize that light industrial and heavy industrial don't lay on top of each other. So I've already got a fence up, three-year lease signed, and business established there for the most part, but I was just needing to get the text moved up, so it'll, I can't remember the word, so it'll, it'll work with the city.
Sure, all right. Thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions? Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak to T 24-01? May do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T 24-01. As with all these public hearings, these first readings we've had, we'll have each of them with another public hearing and a vote on our meeting on February the first. So we will plot out. We get to hear from somebody other than Randy finally.
And Ms. Drake, Mr. Steph had to leave, so would please note that in the minutes.
And as Mr. Forsyth comes forward, we got five items to add tonight. Chair will entertain a motion to add those five items. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, can I say a saying aye?
Aye.
Five items added. Good evening, Sidney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. This is the first reading of an ordinance to update the water and sewer capacity fees. These are one-time fees charged upon establishing service with the city for either water and/or sewer. These fees were initially enacted in 2000 and have not been updated since that time. We commissioned Hazen and Sawyer engineers to study these fees, and they have recommended slight increases for, for single-family or three-quarter inch meters, if you want to look at it that way, and a different method of calculation for meters, four inches, and larger.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to note that the, there's a study, I forget how many pages it is, Sidney Kaboris with that detail, that I would ask to be included as, in the amendments with respect to this, before you open up the public hearing.
I think that's a great idea. You're talking about the study done by Hazen, the contents of that study?
Yes.
I would, does that require a motion to add those, or is that...
No, I just wanted to note for the record that that is part of the amendments.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And if we are okay to proceed now, this first reading of this ordinance requires a public hearing, so I'll open up a public hearing relative to the water and sewer capacity fee update. And anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the water and sewer capacity fee update. This is a first reading of an ordinance, and we'll take it up for consideration at our meeting on February 1st. Is there any other information or questions or discussion that counsel needs to have at this time? Thank you. I will pass it off to Mr. Lovell.
Thank you. Next item is consideration of a resolution.
Next item is consideration of a resolution where we are going to abandon some excess right of way on Old Mill Road and retain an easement for all utility sidewalks and stormwater infrastructure. In addition, along with this, we will actually be trading this property with property owned by Cecil Moore's to grant an easement for future installation of water facilities at the same time. Both of these are recommended by staff, and if you just approve the resolution, all of those things will happen. There's also a certification from the Assistant Public Works Director stating that the right of way is not needed for public purposes.
All right. Any questions, comments on this, discussion? If there are none to be had, chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Porter, you've got the next item, please.
Yes, sir. Visiting session in agreement with Catherine Bennett Consulting. She's been our facilitator for a number of years. Recommend approval, continue on with her service next Friday, Saturday when we go into visiting.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I've seen we've hit the speed round here. Freddie, no pressure on you. You got the next three.
Can I slow it down?
That is a train, that's not you charging to the front. Make another...
Mr. Mayor and Council, we're asking approval for Geo Hydro to perform the compliance services and testing services for materials for the Carsville Fire Station number five, and we're just asking for your approval for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a Sprite Point customer portal. They wanted authorized signatures on the discovery and also the integration documents, and we're bringing that before council for approval. We've discussed it, and we've also worked with our partners at Census and Invoice Cloud to review those documents.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Last one for you, Freddie.
Yes, sir. The additional, the Sprite Point customer portal, that annual subscription invoice, that is for our largest number of customers on gas, it'll be for the $20,400, and that's annual subscription as we move forward into this service.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Chief Champion?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This request is for a purchase of two SuperVac positive pressure fans. It's the two new apparatus that'll be arriving in the spring. These fans are utilized to exhaust gases or smoke from residents when we're there. And just to make note, this is something that we have purchased in the past and upgrading. It allows for us to ventilate a structure without pumping carbon monoxide into that structure, therefore allowing the tenant or the occupant to get back in the structure faster in inclement weather, whatever that may be. With that being said, we went for three bids. We're going with the lowest bid with 10,000, fire and safety for two, I'm sorry, $10,295.46. This is a request budgeted item, and it is gonna be reimbursed through the 2020 SWAS funds.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Dixon, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The gas system is requesting the purchase of 2,870 feet of four-inch steel pipe for the Grassdale Road Improvements Project. Three bids were requested, but only two were submitted. Erby Utilities of Kennesaw, Georgia submitted a low bid of $27,781. This is budgeted item, council's approval to accept this bid as recommended.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Dan, you've got this first added item?
Yes, Mayor, this is an annual purchase of some gift cards for our employees that participate in health and wellness requirement, and cost of that is $13,137.95, which will be reimbursed by our health insurance Anthem Wellness Plan.
Thank you. I'll reiterate, we did not take public money and buy gift cards for our employees. This is a reimbursable something through our health insurance. It's a benefit of having our insurance company.
Correct.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Foyle, you are up. Freddie, you're on deck. Sorry, I missed you with that other one.
Okay, Mayor and Council, I believe Mr. Dixon mentioned the Grassdale Road Improvement Project. This item relates to that as well. It's the Grassdale Road Improvement Project Utility Certification is part of the process. GDOT has, project managers requested we sign a utility certification letter where we request that GDOT go through the utility certification process, which is a part of the overall plan development process, so we can move on with this project and get it let out for bid, hopefully late spring.
Thank you. Very good. Any questions for Stephen? Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Freddie, back at it.
Yes, sir. This request is to extend our contract with ECCO, who is our provider for the census equipment. It was originally due to be completed, of course, by the end of last year. We're extending it this year to finish the project. Asking for your approval of that, please.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Freddie, Mr. Lovell?
Yes, Mayor, this is a standard certificate of dedication and maintenance agreement for the folks at Brightside and Cloverleaf, a new development off of Felton Road. It's for water and sewer, and is recommended by staff for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Harterg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This item is for a resolution to submit an application for Historic Preservation Fund Grant. Every 10 years, the state requires that we update the Historic Resource Survey for our properties in our historic district. We're now about at a 15-year point, so we're past due. This grant would help us with the funding of a consultant to do the work for us. We have $16,000 allocated in the budget for this. It's a 40% match, so this resolution is for the, or authorizes the filing of the grant application, all associated documents, and to accept a grant if awarded. So we ask for approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Reinhardt, finish this up strong.
I'm a mayor and council. We will be looking at the November 2023 and comparing to November 2022 financial report. In the general fund, revenues increased over last November by $2 million. Expenses increased by $4.4 million. Local option sales tax increased to about $626,000. Billing permits and inspection fees increased by $57,000. Water and sewer fund revenues increased over last November by $1.1 million. Expenses increased by $6.3 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues decreased over last year by $10 million. Expenses decreased by $8.6 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, increased debt service expenses, and increases in the transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $1.1 million. Expenses increased by $875,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues increased over last November by $105,000. While the expenses increased by $96,000, this is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. Solid Waste Fund, revenues increased over last year by $330,000, and the expenses increased by $390,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. And finally, in the Fiber Objects Fund, revenue decreased over last November by $966,000. Expenses decreased by $9,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In our cash position for November 2023, unrestricted cash balances increased, and also restricted cash balances increased. SPAS accounts for the November, SPAS 2014 balance $231,991.10. SPAS 2025, $11,407,940.13.
Perfect. Comment?
Just, Mayor, again, it's five months into fiscal year, doing very well as we continue on. You see the last year with gas versus this year, the, hopefully last year was anomaly with the gas prices being so high, our profit margin increased because of that, but this year really on track, and obviously we'll wait till December and January when we hit some seriously cold spells, so unusually cold.
I don't think we're waiting for any cold spells. I think they're here.
I think they're here. I'm saying the revenue will be following soon.
That's true. That's good. Any questions? Discussion? Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other business that needs to come forward, counsel this evening? If not, I'd like to take him, I'm sorry. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm bowled.
Stay gold.